Good afternoon. It's about 6:03 here on Thursday, March the 26th, 2015. We're here at City Hall at 116 West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas. The Granbury City Council Special Meeting is now called to order. I'd like to lead us all in to pledge allegiance at this time. All rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now the Texas flag. Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the city of Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
I apologize for our audience out there this evening. We probably won't have any video of this, but council, you've got your package. You'll also, you'll have it in your iPads if you've brought them along with you. The first item is a deliberation agenda to consider all matters incident and related to the insurance and sale of the city of Granbury, Texas, combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation, Series 2015, including the adoption of an ordinance authorizing assurance of such certificates of obligation. As you've known in the background of this, the city of Granbury intends to issue the certificates of obligation in the maximum principal amount of $2,500,000 for the purpose of constructing and improving streets within the city, including the acquisition of rights thereof, acquiring land for police station, constructing, improving, and equipping firefighting facilities, constructing, improving, and equipping parks and recreation facilities, and paying engineering fees associated with the downtown square project. Prior to the assurance of these certificates of obligation, the city council adopted a resolution authorizing a publication of notice of this intention to issue these bonds in Hood County News. This notification was published on February 21st, February 28th, 2015, and stated the time and the place that the city council proposed to pass the ordinance authorizing the assurance of the certificates, the maximum amount proposed to be issued, the purpose of which the certificates are to be issued, and the manner in which the city council proposed to pay the certificates. The financial considerations on this was based on the preliminary debt scheduled as attached, and also the staff recommendation, the staff recommends of adopting of the ordinance authorizing the assurance of the combination of the tax and the revenue certificates of obligation, Series 2015. At this time, I'd like to call upon, well, I've got somebody else up here. We're going to get Mr. Martin, I guess, to speak first. Mr. Martin?
Do you want me to, do you want, am I out of order here?
No.
No, no, you're not out of order. I didn't know if you or Ava wanted to speak first, but...
I'm good.
It doesn't matter.
All right. Good evening, council. I'm John Martin with Southwest Securities.
You're on.
Okay. We have put before you a booklet summarizing what is before you tonight on this single agenda item, which is the sale of combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation, Series 2015. There's ordinance to be considered. It's been drawn up by Norton Rose Fulbright, your bond counsel, that states the terms and so forth. In the booklet, I'd like to refer you to that and really behind, just go through some of these things and hit some of the high points. We do these books, so you'll have something to refer back to. You know, it seems like we always come about, you know, a couple of years down the road and say, now, what did we do? What kind of rate did we get on that? Or what was our rating? What did the rating agency say at that point in time? So we find it helpful to be able to refer back, and that's why we put these booklets together. Mr. Perkel, get one of these? Okay. Behind tab one is really a cover letter and a thank you note, and then behind that are the members of the financial team, ourselves. Southwest Securities has served as your financial advisor for a long, long time, and as well as Norton Rose Fulbright, your bond counsel. The purchaser, which was determined by competitive bid, and we'll talk about that in a minute, was Fidelity Capital Markets out of Boston, Massachusetts. Everybody's heard of Fidelity Investments. This is their fixed income side that bought the COs here. Behind tab two is the bond buyers index, and you usually see us whenever we appear before you to talk about the bond buyers index, because it's a real good idea to show you the trend of where tax exempt interest rates have been and where they might be headed. So the bond buyers index is a basket, if you will, of 20 municipal bonds that have an average maturity of 20 years, and they have an average rating of Single A. And the, so they index these at the close of business on Thursday each week. Not sure how we came out this week just yet, but if you look at 2015 for the third week of March, that indexed amount was 352, which was 10 basis points or 0.1% lower than the week before, and then it was 368 before. So we were in a good downward trend. And overall, you see as the whole year 2015 and really most of 2014, too, interest rates were very low, particularly when you look at just back a few years ago at 2008, where 6% was the indexed amount. Below all time on this page is 3.27. It happened just in 2012. So overall, if you need to borrow money, it's a great time to borrow money. Not such a good time to try to invest in the fixed income markets, because you're not going to get much return, as you all have seen, I'm sure, in your, in your activity reports of your investments and so forth, of what you're getting in your funds and investment funds and so forth. There's a chart there on the back that shows you a trend line, really, and a nice graph shows you the, like we talked about there, the high of 6% in '08, '09, and then as we've generally dropped back down and taken a turn for the better here in terms of interest rates. Behind the blue sheet, there are the two of your rating agency reports. We are pleased to inform you that both rating agencies affirmed your AA rating. I'm right here, this page here. Is everybody with me? Behind, before we get to tab three, in the middle of tab two. Ratings Direct, it's the Standard and Poor's Report. This is some really good stuff and talks very strongly about the city and its management, which, and reflects very good for you all. You, some of you all that have been around for a while, not just picking on you, Mickey, that have seen, you remember our rating, we were fighting to keep that Single A rating and not drop to the A-, and down to the Bs not too terribly long ago, and you guys have done a super job and ratcheted that up and had really good overall supervision and management, and your staff has done a phenomenal job over the last several years. And all these things speak to, if you look at the heading of each paragraph, very strong economy. Well, those are things you all don't have that much control over. You participate in that economy, but that's a nice base. Strong management, very strong budgetary flexibility, very strong liquidity, adequate budgetary performance, okay. Weak debt and contingency liability profile. Why is that? That is because you have, that is not uncommon. Granbury is not unusual that. We see that in Texas almost with every city, because our biggest borrowers are our school districts, and they take on quite a bit of the per capita debt that we have. So if we're a citizen, that, what that's talking about, if we're a citizen of Granbury, we pay for debt that not only the city issues, but also with the county issues and the school district issues. In this case, we don't have any special districts or anything like that, but we're responsible for that debt in terms of our overall abhorrent tax burden, and so that's really why it's talking about that side. A strong institutional framework, S&amp;P Loves Texas, who doesn't? So behind that sheet, there is then the Fitch Report. It is going to be very similar. Fitch does probably, you know, it's safe to say a better job in their reports than S&amp;P. They put more information really into it. They make no bones about that we have had sales, we have sales tax reliance here in Granbury. We have been less and less, thanks to you all's overall debt management, or excuse me, overall budget, budgetary management, and the way that you all do things. Not as much sales tax reliance, and that you all have built up fund balance over the years and so forth in all your funds. A manageable debt burden, talks about your credit fundamentals and goes through the, your sound finances there. I'm on page three. Manageable debt burden. Debt is a moderate 4.5% of market value with a rapid amortization at 80% within 10 years. You guys are making your payments, you're paying down debt and getting out of debt. So all these things, very good. Congratulations. You know, you've kept, you've had a AA rating, but to keep it, you've done a great job there, too. So that's the rating agency reports. So we go out and we take bids, and these bids were due this morning at 11 o'clock, and the way this works is they come through on, well, it's kind of like eBay. So the way the bonds are due, we put the specs out there on the internet. There's a website portal called Ideal Parity that is put together as part of Thompson Reuters, I believe, and they are, they, the bid specs are out there for them to draw on, and they can configure their bid on that, and then at right at 11 o'clock, the bids must be submitted. So we start seeing them trickle in about a quarter till 11, and at the end, when we, when the bids close at 11, it pops up and gives us the results there, and you can see that we had five bids from throughout the country. So Fidelity out of Boston, Coastal out of Houston, Citigroup, we think of them as New York, but they bid that out of Dallas, William Blair, Chicago, and Robert W. Baird, Redbank, New Jersey. If y'all are familiar with that area, it's just right across the river from New York City. So that's pretty impressive for little old Granbury, Texas. In fact, when I talked to the guy at Fidelity and gave him the verbal award and informed him that he was the low bid, he said, "Now, where exactly is Granbury?" And I told him, and he, because he said, "'Cause we just read the writing reports, and this is an outstanding credit." So there you go. And so he bid, as you saw, 1.799662%. So I hope the press picks that up someplace, that just under one, around 1.8% is what the city is borrowing for. That is phenomenal. Congratulations there. All the bids were very good. Only one guy, Robert W. Baird, the guys over in Redbank, they bid over 2%, but you had a very competitive sale. Congratulations for that. So after we reward the bids to Fidelity, we start looking back at their numbers, and you can see the details of the issue on the second page of tab three, by the way, the details of the issue, and their certificates are going to be dated April 15th. There's going to be money in the bank for you all to make sure you've got it properly collateralized on April 22nd. First interest payment is not until this next budget year, so on February 15th, 2016. So when you do your budget this summer, you will budget in the payment for these new COs. The interest then pays semiannually, February 15th and August 15th, just like your other debts, so you'll be on track there. First principal coming up the next fiscal year as well. There's a nine-year call on these, even though they're a very short 10-year deal. We can call those bonds if, you know, not real likely that we'll call 2% bonds, but you do have that flexibility. The true interest cost after we, yes, sir?
Excuse me on that. America, can I ask him a question?
Sure, absolutely.
You said y'all could call them, or they could call them?
You call them. It's your option.
Okay.
It's your option. What happens that Mr. Allen is, is when we issue securities, that when you, when you have tax exempt bonds, that you're giving the investor, the investor wants a period of time that he knows he's going to get a rate of return, a yield. And so usually, you know, usually, most cities issue debt for a longer period of time than 10 years, and Granbury has on a few occasions. But there's a lockout period, really, to where we can't call those bonds. And so you may recall that, like, the '06 and '07s that we refinanced here the last few years, those are a result of us being able to call those bonds, take them away from the investors, and reissue them out at lower rates.
Good, okay. Sorry, John.
No, no problem. Feel free.
I understand it.
Then we talk about the, shows the true interest cost. That's 1.80. That's because we adjusted maturities to get to a level, and it just moved to the basis point. Your ratings, as we talked about, affirmed at AA. Your pain agent, like the others, US Bank. Mr. Dransfield is your primary representative there with bond counsel. Myself and Mr. Durk are here with Southwest Securities. So the next page behind that is the sources and uses of funds. This is like the balance sheet of the issue, shows where the money's coming from and where the money is going. So we talked about $2.5 million, and you see there that we're going to, the par amount of the certificates is $2,460,000. That's because Fidelity bid a larger premium, and that's why we adjusted some of the maturities there, and we don't need all that money. We're still going to get, if you see the deposit to the project fund, $2.5 million. So we reduced the amount of the borrowing by $40,000 because of the interest, interest and overall re-offering deals that brought us $131,000 there, you can see, of the premium. The accrued interest is simply the interest from the date to date, April 15th to April 22nd. They pay for that. And the deposit to the project fund, we talked about there, $2.5 million. The debt service fund, that's the accrued interest and some rounding of about $200. And the cost of issuance are detailed on the last page of three. We'll talk about that, paragraph of section three. The underwriters discount, that's what Fidelity is, that's what they're hoping to turn a profit on from reselling the bonds. So that's kind of sales commission. Again, that's all built into their bid. The sideways page, that is the second page of tab three, I'm right here. This is the most important page of the whole book. Shows you your overall debt structure for your tax-supported debt. So follow with me here, and I know there are a lot of numbers on this page. So we go down the left-hand side there, and we see our fiscal years, and that shows our existing debt. We have tax-supported debt and water and sewer-supported debt. Does not include our revenue bonds. This is the water and the portion that are self-supported from the COs in the past. So overall, you see that in this last year, we levied a tax to pay $2,700,000. We had water and sewer support for the COs of about $540,000, for a total of 3.2. And 2016, this coming fiscal year, we had paid, we're paying off, a lot of our debt is being paid off. So we have a significant drop there on our tax-supported debt. Our water and sewer debt's fairly constant there. You can see it's just over $500,000 every year. So our total debt structure, so this is ability to be able, that's why we're able to issue short-term debt, because we have some debt rolling off there. And so you see the principal interest payments. So we're going to add to the tax-supported amount, the new payment, $574,600 in this first fiscal year, a little higher than the others, but we have an opportunity to pay it down. I think that's important. So we're going to stay just under six points, excuse me, $2.7 million, a little bit lower than last year. And we've estimated the tax rate out there with your net taxable value in the far right-hand column. So we believe your INS tax rate, if you do the math on this, assuming 98% collections, should go down roughly 3/4 of a penny. Okay? Yes, sir?
Judge, just so I understand, on the tax, on the tax-supported debt?
Yes, sir.
You're referring to the general fund, basically?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So the general fund will see an increase in cash flow in 2016 of $620,000?
Uh, okay. Yep.
Would that be accurate?
Yeah, before this debt.
Right, before this debt.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right.
Now, keep in mind that this general fund debt, so it's interest and sinking fund debt for the, you know, we have an M&amp;O tax rate and an INS tax rate to get to our total tax rate. So this is on the INS side, okay? So, you know, we can, we can talk about a total tax rate. Obviously, you know, if your values will, and you don't have a rollback issue, you can keep your same tax rate, you lower your INS, keep your M&amp;O up, and keep the same tax rate. So this does give you, I think this might be where you might be going, is gives you some budgetary flexibility in your general fund expenditures, because your debt is going to be lower, your INS side's going to be lower, so you'll have more capacity for other general fund expenditures, pay-as-you-go type stuff, operational things. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay. So then, the following year in '17, we drop off some more. Now, we know that we've got some other projects that are in the hopper coming up 10, 12 months from now, right? So we've got adequate capacity to be able to fund those, too, like we do on this small issue this year. So you all are in great shape. That's why the rating agencies love you, is that your debt management is manageable, very manageable. So if you don't do anything, you can see that the tax-supported debt is going to go from $2.7 million, I'm looking at the combined new totals, sixth column from the right, $2.7 million to about $2.4 million, and then it drops off then after 2022 to another $1,006, and then finally out to less than $1 million after '26 to '32. You guys are out of debt in '32. Pretty impressive. The next sheet is, shows you where that bond production comes from that we were talking about. This is how Fidelity will sell the bonds, that, for example, if they have the 2020 maturity, they have 215 bonds, that you're going to pay 3%. They're going to reoffer them at 1.4%. So the investor's going to pay 108 cents on the dollar, which generates 17,000 bucks that comes back to you and offsets cost of issuance. So that's the whole idea, is we're not going to have to, the money that you're, what you're borrowing is actually going to go into the construction fund, and really, this premium's going to help offset their fees, the Fidelity fees, and all the other costs of issuance and fees associated with the debt issuance. Finally, the last page of that section is our budget for what we believe the cost of issuance will come out to be. Our firm, Bond Counsel Fulbright Jaworski, excuse me, Norton Rose Fulbright, Attorney General, the S&amp;P fee, Fitch rating, they charge as well. Official statement printing, that's, they will have the, each investor needs a paper document there. Pain agent, and we have a rounding amount there, just to hedge. But normally, you know, I know Wayne and Ava will tell you that we overbudget, so we don't want to underbudget, so you have to come out of pocket, and we'll probably send, you know, $4,000, $5,000 back to you to put into your INS fund. So that's really the numbers of a presentation, ladies and gentlemen. And behind tab four is the offering document and the bid specs, the notice of sale. This is what goes out to bidders and to the marketplace, and then they tear the first part of this, the notice of sale, the bid specs off, and then use the official statement piece and back piece, which shows a lot of demographic and economic information on the city of Granbury, Hood County, and so forth, and along with the legal opinion of Norton Rose Fulbright. Following, any questions you may have? The very last page of the booklet, we put a suggested form of motion in there for you if you choose to use it. If Stewart has something better to do, that's fine, too. But this is the suggestion, not to put words in anybody's mouth, but just an idea. I'm happy to answer any questions. Again, congratulations on a great sale, less than 2%. Oh, Ava wanted me to point out, we sold bonds at, do you know where Gilmer is? North of Longview? Sold bonds in Gilmer two nights ago, Tuesday, and they were 12-year, and they were eligible for bank qualified. We couldn't do these bank qualified, because we got the water plant, Water Development Board loan coming that's going to be in excess. They'll throw us over $10 million, but they were only doing about $3.5 million for 12 years, and so, and they're a Double A minus credit, and they got 1.82. So you all were non-bank qualified, a little bit shorter, and did better than they did, and y'all, y'all are a little bit better credit rating, but that's impressive, you know? So y'all are right on the mark. Anyway, wanted to throw that out. Could I answer any questions for anybody?
Counsel, any questions for John? Councilman Allen?
I've got a comment. I thank you. As you know, when I got on four, five years ago, I argued with every one of these damn bonds we ever got into, but I think you come down, I think you're doing a better job, John. Rates getting way low.
Well, I know my audience, Mr. Allen.
No, thank you. You did a great job. And a question for you, you made a remark that our rating is great, which I agree with you. Thank you, and our city staff for doing that. But, you know, we've got the airport, we've got the water treatment, which is somewhere else, y'all handling that, too. But, you know, to look at a long-term deal for next 10 to 15 years, and we've got the police department coming up, we've got maybe some hangers we want to do at the airport, maybe a terminal. Should we be looking at maybe a 30, 40 million dollar bond, or would it hurt us to do that in the next year or two?
I do not think that we are prepared to look at that just yet. That's an awful lot of money.
But that's what we're looking at to spend.
Well, I know that we've got a water plant that's going to run us about $16 million, right? Are you including in that? Is that 30 million plus the 60?
Including in, say, 35 or 40 million.
Well, we know, and that's, and that's a separate fund. That's from the enterprise fund, right? The water and sewer, the water plant is going to take care of the expenditure of that. We're not going to, we're not putting that on the taxpayers, right?
Yeah.
So, and I would assume that we would have some sort of pro forma before we start borrowing a bunch of money out at the airport, that while it's, I mean, part of that's economic development, so we would want to make certain that we're going to get that back. I think, I think that's a big part of it. I mean, we'd be happy to take a look at that, and, you know, that's kind of a, that's a, airports are an unusual animal.
My thought was, the interest rate is probably as cheap as it ever going to get. We said that last time it went down cheaper, but it's pretty reasonable, you know, when you're getting under 2.
Yeah, if you have to borrow money, it's a good time to borrow.
It is.
No doubt.
And I think it's something that the council ought to look at, you know, what's our, what's our goals for next three to five years and start planning it to spend that money.
Well, you know, you're just, you got to look at the, you know, the pot that you're paying that from, right? So, you know, your abhorrent tax, if, I thought you were talking about putting $30 million in the, on the INS tax rate. I'm sorry, I misunderstood you there. So if we were talking about that, I was, that's why I kind of went a little bit.
That's what you were. You were saying you want to go borrow the 30 million, right?
Well, yeah, yeah, yeah.
He was talking about putting on.
The water treatment's coming out of a different.
Yeah, you're paying that out of your enterprise fund.
And we got a sheet to show you how we're going to pay for the utility on the general fund side.
Yeah.
And it has been planned for the last three, five years.
Yeah.
Three, five years. You've already done.
Let me ask you this.
We're pretty confident that, that, you know, that, and Ava and I have talked about this on a few occasions, in terms of your, your capacity moving forward, with able to keep, you know, in that schedule, that that schedule, we showed you the big sideways schedule, that in terms of what, what's manageable and you, you know, to politically, also, to make sure we're keeping that tax rate at that, at that level, and we were confident that, you know, you can do around $4 million in the next, in the next following fiscal year, as short as 15 years, and be perfectly fine without any real tax rate impact at all. So.
And if we let that drop, I think the point you made was that's the decrease in INS, it doesn't necessarily give you operational funds, right?
No, I mean, right, not necessarily. Depends on if you have a rollback issue or not. If you don't have a rollback issue, you can, you can bump up the M&amp;O side.
Doesn't have an impact, but that drop of INS impacts your rollback.
That's correct.
And amazingly, it eliminates our net, right? Almost to the rate, I think she computed it, almost to the rate we are today.
Yeah, and, and, you know, your rollback calculation, actually, debt helps that. So oddly enough, it's, who understands the truth and taxation of the way the state, but...
You got to look at the computation.
It's very weird.
I'm not making a motion to borrow 30 or 40 million. I don't think I'd get a second.
You probably would, you probably would, Mr. Allen.
And I'm the tightest one up here, probably, so.
You are. Is this the same guy? This the same guy that was beating me up a few years ago?
But thank you again.
Yep.
Counsel, any more questions for Mr. Martin? John? Very good, John, pardon. Well, very good, John, and we appreciate what you do and also what Ava's done for us, and, you know, as you said, things have changed. Normally, Mr. Allen would have been asking, "How much are you charging to do this for us?" You know, so.
I learned to read it after five years.
He knows exactly where pages to turn to. And we fully disclose.
You saved us more than you charged us.
Yep.
That's, then we'll have Ava Gregory come up and... With her little two-minute speech, right?
All right. I just wanted to add to what John said, that we have done our projections, and we have looked at our debt capacity, and I know John walked you through this schedule that shows where we are right now and what this debt will do to us, how it's increased the debt schedule. We also have done another analysis where we had added that $3.9 million, $4 million projected bond issue and analyzed what, how our debt service will change at that point, and calculated, John calculated, the INS rate. And both of these issues are something that the city can do at this point, keeping its debt level constant and the INS rate very close to constant. And as Wayne mentioned, if our debt would dramatically decrease, which it would, we have some... have some debt rolling off, it would affect our rollback tax rate. And I have did some calculation today and tried to see how the rollback tax rate would be decreasing, and it does decrease if the debt is not there to support it. So, I do have another handout for you all, if you wanted to look at that, but it's basically the same thing what John already walked you through, where we are right now with that old debt, and where we will be with the new issue.
Do you have it right now?
I do have it. Should I hand it out?
Wait.
Oh, excuse me.
Wait, hand it out.
Okay. All right. What you're looking at on the first page is summarizing our current issue, the different projects that we are going to be addressing with this bond issue. And underneath, under existing debt service, I had noted our current INS debt, and what our current INS debt is after the 2014 refunding, and projected savings, that is, the savings that we are realizing after the 2014 refunding that we just completed in December, and the debt roll-off. At the very bottom, the table shows you the new issue. The first one is the bond certificate for, in the amount of 2.5 million dollars, the one John just presented, the projected debt service payments for the next five years. And underneath that, I have a 3.8 million dollar issue, and showing when that comes on to the horizon, when we start paying for that, and basically showing you that the available funding is there for both of these issues. Again, with the refunding of the 2014 and the debt roll-off, both of these debt services, as they are structured by our financial advisor, are affordable and are within the city's debt capacity. And I attached the table, what John Martin prepared for us, the second page, that's another debt schedule, and that's just forecasting what happens to our debt service with the 3.9 million dollar issue. I'm sorry, earlier I said 3.8. We've been talking about 3.9.
Ava, I do have a question.
Okay.
Okay, look, I've got two questions. One of them is like, the engineering for downtown square project, if we go the other way, and I went at the last meeting, but with the 8010, 8020, 9010, whatever it was, we won't spend that 250,000, all that on that, right?
I don't know. We haven't received a very close estimate on what the engineering will cost. Some of the engineering was already completed, so this is just an estimate to complete the current engineering. This is not the actual project. The 8020 grant you are talking about, that will be for the project, and you are right, this, the engineering could roll into that, but I'm not very familiar how the grant will work. I know it's an 8020 grant, and if the engineering is, I think it allows for the engineering, then you are right, we would only have to cover maybe 20%.
And we put some cushion in the 2.5, okay?
Oh, in the top 2.5 million issue, yes.
Yeah.
So, we could move some of that to streets if we needed to.
Yes. And as, as you remember, the projected street construction project was around 2 million dollars. The, there are streets that need attention.
See, those streets let us have, if we want to spend more on any particular one, we haven't given them an amount for each item we said we'd work on, so we can move within there and switch it.
Okay. The other deal is the 3.8 million, 15 years, and that doesn't kick in until 2016, 17?
Yes. If we issued that debt early next year, we won't have to pay on it till 2017, same thing as we are doing.
What are we spending that money for?
Airport.
Airport?
That's going to be the result of the Myers, it's estimating the Myers, at 174,000, I think that we're actually going to be it. That's the estimate of paying off Myers, and then we would have all the airport paid for.
What happens if we settle with them before then?
We issued the bond before then.
We what?
We would issue the bond before then.
Move it? Move the bond up? And what would that do to our rating?
I mean, they had that, they looked at it, so they're okay with it. We told them about the airport, we even told them about the police station.
We could even do the police station right now?
Not right now, not right now. We told them it'd be in the future. But at least we went ahead and told them that that was in the plans. You've got to do that, you don't want to surprise them coming down.
You're talking about all of it?
No, we're talking about the bond rating agencies.
Okay, so they know, okay.
They know about it.
Okay.
And so, that basically, they still went with the AA, because they have, because there's going to be revenue coming in during that interim period.
When, when do y'all feel like, John, that we'll, we'll put the air, put the police station, go after that?
The numbers that we used were March of next year, okay, so a year away. However, regardless, as long as we're sometime after September 30, September, September 1, sorry, September 3.
I think we're getting...
Next fiscal year.
No, I think we're getting confused. He said police station, you're talking about airport, okay? The 3.9. He's not talking about the 3.9.
Whatever the next series of debt on the tax rolls is, needs to be in the following fiscal year.
Yeah.
That's the point.
But we're not going to be able to do that. You know, the 3.9, maybe as much as 4.5 or 5, because you've still got some cushion.
Yeah.
But we're not planning on issuing that.
As long as you're October 1, 2015 or here, we're all good.
Well, police station's still got to be designed. We haven't even designed it.
Yeah.
We don't even have a place to put it yet.
Okay.
So, it's, it's out there a ways.
Yeah. I, I know that y'all have a lengthy list of stuff to do. I can't keep you with it.
Yeah, but he's talking about the airport. You're talking about the airport, and we've had an estimate that the legal suit may go into the end of the year or first of next year, and that's when we're talking about issuing the bond, if needed.
My question is this. The airport land next year, I understand. Okay, let's say at the, they come back on the police station and say it's 6, 7, 8 million dollars to do it. When would we sell those bonds?
We'd have to decide we want to spend it first.
All right, if we decided we want to spend it, are we financially able to sell them next year?
Oh, no.
What, what kind of time limit, just roughly, do you think we're looking at?
Two to three years, but then, I think you're still going to have to look at other tax revenues.
Paying taxes.
Paying taxes.
Yeah, okay.
You take it out to the people, you get the election.
Yeah.
Everybody says, yep, we want a police station.
In my election year, and that's okay.
But, I mean, that's going to be out there a ways.
No, no. I agree. Okay. Sort of confused you there, John.
So, basically, just to summarize that, right now, the city has the debt capacity for this issue, and the issue for early next year for the 3.9 million dollars for the airport land. If we will do anything further than that, we're probably looking at increasing tax
Counsel, any questions for Ava?
If you have one more schedule, I want to go ahead and show them that if you don't...
Okay.
That's great. We've also done the utility fund, because we did go to date, and we did get approved for the 16 million dollars from Texas Water Development Board.
On utility?
Yeah, at 2%.
Really?
Yep. We have that funding set up.
On this schedule, this is basically a pro forma statement, starting with the year we just completed, 2013, 14, the current budget year, and looking forward another seven years, we are projecting our revenues at a rate of 3%, and our expenditures by each department, highlighted in yellow on the water purchase swats, you can see how the swats expense rolls off, and highlight it in yellow at, towards the bottom, the debt service for the water treatment plan. Those are the numbers that are projected numbers that I received, again, from John Martin, based on the schedule that we are having, how much of that debt will come on each year going forward. Above that line, the debt service current, shows our current debt service, and basically, going down to the very bottom table, we have the revenue over expenses before the capital, and the different reserves that we reserve or require to reserve funds for each year, and the net remaining funds before capital, less capital that we are projecting right now to spend in the following years, and the budget issue, as you see, we are positive. So, with that said, we are projecting that with the new water treatment plan coming onboard, and as we planned, the swats rolling off will allow us to be able to issue the new debt, and still be positive going forward.
May I have a question, Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Parsons?
Where is the, the water treatment dollar seems to be fairly constant going across 595, 82, 599. Looks to me like we could expect some kind of large or fairly large increase in expenses. Am I missing, is that somewhere in this sheet and I'm not reading it?
The expenses, where is it?
Well, I'm looking at the water treatment, and it seems to be fairly constant, growing at some, you know, 5%.
Yeah, wait, it shouldn't be proportion, there's no great increase in revenue either.
Okay.
In other words...
I understand we won't have an increase in revenue, but we should have, I assume this new plant will be more expensive to operate than our current plant, and I'm not sure that, and I don't know what that is. I mean, but it seems to me like we're going to add 2.5 million, or all those filters and pumps and things like that, that the expense of operating the water treatment systems would be increased, and I don't know whether that'll be offset by the swats reduction or...
Yeah, that's pretty much it. Now, which we're not getting our water from swats, but it's helping with the debt and the operations.
Okay. So, I'd just like to make sure we do have a...
We can protect that.
We've been looking at, been looking at the expenses that are going to be incurred in 2017 when this new plant, are we going to have to hire a new person to run it, or a new expertise and/or?
I've talked to Ava, there's not much increase in, in fact, it's a pretty efficient plant. It's more efficient than what we got.
Okay.
So, I don't think you're showing a big difference, but we should see added revenue because we're able, we're going to have the ability to sell more water.
Yeah.
Okay? And so, we haven't even built in that added revenue and that added expense, and we, it's hard to project it just yet. I mean, it's two or three years out, but a lot of things is going to be dependent on if we still have a drought or not, but I think there's going to be somebody to buy the water.
Yeah.
So, that's our plan.
All right.
We can do more work on that. We can do more.
Ava, I thought that, that there was no debt service payments the first year of the water plant or something.
That is just interest that will be due in 2016. That would be our first interest payment. The principal will not happen until the following year, 2017.
So, it wasn't the entire debt service that was postponed, it was just the interest on that program?
The interest is due the following year, and the principal is the one which is delayed until the construction is completed. We can choose to delay the principal until the construction is completed, or go ahead and pay. This schedule assumes that we are going to make our first interest, principal payment in 2017, our first interest payment in 2016.
All right, thank you.
Ava, I've got one question here on the projections. How, how did we calculate the projections on our electric side going towards the, the end of a contract, or even if we was to sell it?
All right. This schedule does not consider selling the electric company at this point.
So, even if it wasn't, we do know that we'll be out of a contract, though, that we have to renew a contract.
It will get cheaper, there will be a...
Right. So, you are right.
Additional reduction.
So, that's just an estimate of what it...
Yeah, this is definitely an estimate. We can go into more detail, project lower cost of electricity, maybe higher cost of water treatment, so, you know, we really could dive into it and fine-tune this. This is just a rough estimate based on what we have seen on our growth.
So, for clarification...
I hope it's accurate.
Are you saying that this doesn't reflect a new contract price for electricity in 17 or 18?
It doesn't.
But we want to show the most conservative thing, you know?
Wouldn't it be a good assumption to say that whatever that reduction is might be passed through in the form of a rate reduction too?
Yeah, but there's probably some savings there, and there's going to be pressure to do that, and pressure to pass that savings on to the consumer. So, the revenue could go down, lots of things could happen right when that happens.
Counsel, any more questions for Ava? Or Wayne?
I'd just like to thank Wayne, and Ava, and John for a job well done. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Good job.
Get us to that next level. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, counsel, is there any more questions or any concerns or discussion on this matter? If not, I'll use John's suggestion form here. Thank you for that too, John. I'll move that we award, the award of the 2,460,000 combination tax and revenue certificates of the Obligation Series 2015 to Fidelity Capital Markets, and that the mayor and the city secretary take all necessary actions to perfect the sale and authorize the issue thereof.
I'll move.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second for Councilperson Myers. There's any more discussion, counsel? If not, Councilman Parsons, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Allen, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Couch, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Perkel?
Aye.
Councilperson Myers?
Aye.
That is approved. Thank you. I will make one quick note that during the start of the meeting, Councilperson Perkel was not here. He did arrive at 6:05. To the recording secretary, please. At this time, I will now declare that the Granbury City Council is convening to open session, that all our members are present. The city council will now go into closed session pursuant to the provisions of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following section, Section 551.075, consultation with attorney, airport condemnation. The council has now returned from closed session, reconvened into open session. There was no action taken in the closed session. Counsel, is there a...
Mr. Mayor, I'd like, I'd like to make a motion, a motion to approve a compromise settlement agreement in cause number C06738 in the Hood County Court at Law.
We have a motion by Councilman Parsons? Do we have a second?
Let me second.
I have a second by Councilman Perkel. I will make a notation to the, the recording secretary. Councilperson Myers had to leave during the session. Is there any more discussion, counsel? If not, all in favor of that, I'm sorry. Councilman Parsons, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Councilman Allen, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilman Couch, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Perkel?
Aye.
That is approved. Counsel, counsel, if there's any, are there any more discussion? If no more discussion, this council meeting is adjourned.